Would everyone please rise?
Good evening and welcome to the inaugural meeting of the 2014 to 18 City Council. I'd ask you to remain standing for the singing of our National Anthem. Please be seated. I'd like to thank the Queen Helena, Canadian Croatian Folk Dance Group, for singing the anthem this evening. I had the pleasure of being on the board of directors of the group for some 15 years, and as many of you know, it is my cultural background in terms of the country I was born in. So, thank you very much for singing the anthem today. I'd now like to invite Jean Becker, Senior Advisor of Aboriginal Initiatives at WLU, to give the Indigenous opening for tonight's meeting.
Ahojó, sego, skano, wache. I would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territory of the Neutral, the Haudenosaunee, and the Inishnaabe peoples. Ahojó, mashom sak, nokom sak. Minó pamahtse, akikoi desnekas, mikinak dotum. Owaskashay ogetchita. Natasunununutzi vot dunjiba. Getchime gretchka jemenado. Kinu naskel mitten, sawaethaman, katepachikian, pimatisewin, kahilihiyan. I have given thanks for the beautiful life that we have been given, for the beautiful world we live in, and I have asked that we may walk on the earth in a sacred manner. And I would like to give thanks for this day, for the installation of our new mayor, and I would also like to acknowledge the mayor who is leaving, Carl's heir, Gwich.
Thank you very much, Ms. Becker. And now for our invocations, I would first like to introduce Zainab Ramahi, an alumna of the Kitchener Youth Action Council. Welcome, Zainab.
With parents from diaspora and refugee communities, I grew up with a keen awareness of the significance of social and political justice, as well as of the importance of community engagement. So, a few years after I moved to KW when I was about 14 or 15 years old, I joined the City of Kitchener's Youth Action Council. I had participated in all sorts of clubs and leadership development initiatives before, but Kayak was an entirely new experience for me. For the first time, I was in an environment where I felt the power of young people had serious potential to create positive change. I felt valued and that we, the young members of the group, were in control and supported by the group facilitators. Kayak is where I first met Marla, who asked me to speak here tonight. The collaborative, open, and supportive structure and culture of the council, and Marla's facilitation especially, taught me a lot about what it truly means to be a leader. The most important lesson I learned from my years at Kayak. I learned that leadership fundamentally is a synonym for the empowerment of others. Good leaders build the capacity of those they serve to act for themselves, and they participate in their communities as co-creators of anti-oppressive environments. Leaders do everything they can to build confidence in others, and leaders share with people the tools they need to pursue their passions so that they lead fulfilling lives and can make their own contributions to society. I look forward to seeing the ways in which we can all work together to continue building a just society through strong leadership. This begins at home by creating spaces where newcomers and young people are welcomed and where people feel that they belong. I want to live in a community that values diversity and understands the importance of meaningfully including and encouraging diverse perspectives. I want to live in a community that acts sustainably and where we all respond to the needs of our most marginalized members. As a young person, I am excited and I am full of hope. Mine is a generation that is growing up with people of different colors and cultures all around us, and, I believe, an acute awareness of the challenges we face in fostering just, equitable, and sustainable communities at the local level while ensuring that we fulfill our responsibilities of global citizenship. While I usually resist the suggestion that I speak on behalf of all young people, I will confidently say that the youth of this city wants to work with you to help each other move beyond tolerance and towards respect, care, and accommodation for each other. I sincerely congratulate you and hope to join you in continuing to serve the community. Thank you.
Normally, we don't allow applause in the council chamber, but I think tonight we will. Thank you very much, Zainab. You certainly left us with some words to ponder over. And now I'd like to invite Father Dan Lobssinger from the St. Agatha Roman Catholic Church to come forward for an invocation. Father Dan is a member of the Congregation of the Resurrection, the congregation that looked after St. Jerome's High School behind the City Hall for 125 years, and also happens to be someone who went to school with a number of us in this room. He's promised me he won't bring back any memories from those days. Father Dan.
I was only given two minutes, and so I can't really do that. In forming this special prayer and blessing upon Barry and the council, I really thought about the many years which I've known Barry and many of the qualities that you will hear in this blessing. I believe I've come to know that Barry exemplified them very well in the many years that I have known him, and I hope and pray through the grace of God that his influence may be a positive one on the City of Kitchener and the members of council that he has called to serve. Through God of wisdom, justice, and compassion, I ask your guidance and direction for this mayor, Barry Verbanovic, and its council as they begin this term of service to the citizens of the City of Kitchener. Give them wisdom and courage to deal justly with the difficult decisions they will be called on to make. Justice and compassion for the poor, the disadvantaged, the needy, and homeless in our midst. The impartiality and consideration to work harmoniously with the various services which care for the safety, well-being, and cultural and physical advancement of our fellow citizens. And above all, the will to place the good of our society above all other considerations. Give your blessing to them, their families, and loved ones, and help us, the citizens of Kitchener, to cooperate with them in a spirit of understanding and gratitude for their willingness to serve. Amen.
Thank you, Father Dan. I'll now turn the floor over to the Honorable Mr. Justice PJ Flynn for the declarations of elected office by the mayor and members of council. Justice Flynn.
Dobro vecer.
Thank you.
Kakusti? Negova dobro hervatski. Kadazat vorate.
Good job.
You know, they worried about miking me. And right now, I feel like it's the beauty and the beast because of this little thing. You can tell already at the level that we're proceeding with this new council, you can tell the volume levels up at this end of the room. His carship was never that loud.
Must be the Croatian in me, I don't...
So, we'll fit you right after you read your declaration, please.
I, Barry Verbanovic, have been elected or appointed to the office of mayor in the municipality of Kitchener to solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, or the reigning sovereign for the time being, and will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath. Mayor Bear.
And now I'd like to invite forward Ward One Counselor Scott Davy.
I think as you read these declarations, council, you can go right to the elected part and skip the appointed part, and the reigning sovereign is Elizabeth.
Thank you. I, Scott Davy, have been elected to the office of Counselor Ward One in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And now I'd like to invite forward Ward Two Counselor Dave Schneider.
I, Dave Schneider, having been elected to the office of Counselor Ward Two in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truthfully, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And now I'd like to invite forward Ward Three Counselor John Gazola.
I, John Gazola, having been acclaimed to the office of Counselor Ward Three in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly swear promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise the office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And now I'd like to invite forward Ward Four Counselor Yvonne Fernandez.
I, Yvonne Fernandez, having been elected or appointed to the office of Counselor Ward Four in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declarations conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Next, I'd like to invite forward Counselor Kelly Galloway-Seelock, Ward Five Counselor.
I, Kelly Galloway-Seelock, having been elected to the office of Counselor Ward Five in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Next, I'd like to invite forward Ward Six Counselor Paul Singh.
I, Paul Singh, having been elected to the office of Counselor Ward Six in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or any promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true, knowing that it is in the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Next, I'd like to invite forward Ward Seven Counselor Bill Ionitis.
I, Bill Ionitis, having been elected or appointed to the office of Counselor Ward Seven in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or a promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemnly promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of some force, same force, and effect as made under oath.
Next, I'd like to invite forward Ward Seven Counselor... Sorry, Ward Eight Counselor Zigunetsky.
I, Zigunetsky, having been elected to the office of Counselor Ward Eight in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or a promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Next, I'd like to invite forward Ward Nine Counselor Frank Etherington.
I, Frank Etherington, having been elected to the office of Counselor Ward Nine in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear this allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is in the same force and effect as if it were made under oath.
And last, but certainly not least, Ward Ten Counselor Sarah Marsh.
I, Sarah Marsh, having been elected to the office of Counselor Ward Ten in the municipality of Kitchener, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or a promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty, Queen Elizabeth II, and I will make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Ladies and gentlemen, your mayor and council all properly declared into office. I just would point out that Counselor Etherington was nervous when he saw me, thinking there might be a recount in the office. And I have to set one thing straight from the other night. I don't remember anything about carrying buttons for mayor's air. I would have happily done it. I do remember, however, this lad being my gateway to the Concordia Club during October 1st. All I can say to all of you is, may the wind be at your back.
Thank you very much, Justice Flynn. Thank you very much, Lorna. And now I will call to order the official part of this evening in terms of our meeting of council. And I will call on Counselor Fernandez to bring forward Clause Two of the Council Report. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. It has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Sarah Marsh that Clause Two of the Striking Committee Report regarding the appointments of the Chairs and Vice-Chairs of the Standing Committees of Council for the one-year period ending November 30th, 2015 be adopted.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. And now I'll ask that Counselor Kelly Galloway-Seelock bring forward Clauses Three and Four of the Striking Committee of Council Report.
It has been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Bill Ionitis that Clause Three and Four of the Striking Committee Report regarding the appointments to the legislated and/or statutory boards committees or tribunals as well as advisory committees of council for the specified term be adopted.
Thank you very much, Counselor Galloway-Seelock. All those in favor? Opposed? That too is carried unanimously. And now I'll call on Counselor Davy to bring forward the balance of the Striking Committee of Council Report. Counselor Davy.
Thank you. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Yonetski that the balance of the Striking Committee Report be adopted.
Thank you, Counselor Davy. All those in favor? Opposed? And that too is carried unanimously.
Your Honor, Justice Pat Flynn, Mayor Zaire and Christie, elected officials from the federal and provincial governments, family, friends, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening and welcome to tonight's inaugural celebration of the 2014-2018 City Council. On behalf of my ten City Council colleagues and myself, a sincere thank you for joining us for this special celebration as the new council for the city of Kitchener takes office. Tonight, two new counselors and eight returning counselors have taken their declarations of office, and I am honored to be sworn in as your new mayor. The privilege to serve one's fellow citizens is a privilege not to be taken lightly. It is indeed a humbling experience to know that thousands of residents have bestowed their faith in you to lead their ward, or in my case, to lead our city. I have often argued that there is no more noble profession than public service. In fact, in the words of Mahatma Gandhi, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service to others." Tonight, the eight men and three women sitting around this horseshoe have taken that very commitment, a commitment to serve the residents, all residents of our community, as your city council. I am honored to have the privilege of working together with them over the next four years on your behalf. Thank you for entrusting the leadership of our community to you. Serving this community, this community has been my life's work, and I begin my first mayoral address humbled by the oath that I've just taken and by the trust that you bestowed in me. Thank you very much. I'm excited to work together with this council and staff on behalf of our more than 230,000 citizens. I know that my colleagues all recognize what a great privilege we've been granted, and we take this responsibility very seriously. I would also like to thank all of the candidates who put their name on a ballot for this municipal election. It is a courageous decision to run for office. Thank you for being part of our local democratic process. Congratulations and welcome back to our eight returning counselors, Scott Davy, John Gazola, Yvonne Fernandez, Kelly Galloway-Seelock, Paul Singh, Bill Ionitis, Zig Yonetski, and Frank Etherington. I also want to extend a warm welcome to our two newly elected counselors, Dave Schneider in Ward Two and Sarah Marsh in Ward Ten. I hope that you will find as much personal satisfaction in working with our community and serving the public as I have. Carl Zaire and Dan Glenn Graham have left our council horseshoe, but I would like to take a moment to acknowledge their contributions to our city. Carl Zaire has served our community for the past 26 years, the last 17 as Mayor of Kitchener. He is Kitchener's longest-serving mayor, and today he finally got a much-deserved day off. Carl has left a legacy of community building and success throughout our community and will be remembered for many things, but to me, he will be remembered for his quiet leadership, his commitment to downtown revitalization, and his focus on the economic renewal of our community. Dan Glenn Graham served as Ward Ten Counselor for the past four years before entering the mayoral race. He was a consummate community builder. For three years in a row, his ward hosted the most neighborhood of events of any ward in Kitchener under the Festival of Neighborhoods banner. His contributions were important and will not be forgotten. Thank you, Dan. Ladies and gentlemen, Kitchener has elected a strong council with a clear mandate to manage our city's growth, to ensure that Kitchener continues to enjoy a growing economy, and to deliver efficient services with a greater focus on the core services we deliver to citizens every day as well as customer service. This is what we know it will take to continue to build a better Kitchener together for today and for generations to come. In fact, working together, council, citizens, staff, and community partners will be critical to our success in delivering on this mandate. We must work collaboratively together as a council, respecting that we all bring different strengths, passions, values, and perspectives to the table, and knowing that those things give us strength, they do not have to divide us. We may have campaigned as individual candidates, but now is the time to come together and govern collectively. We will do this by working together with citizens, engaging them in key decisions, harnessing their energy and passion, and listening to them as we build the Kitchener our citizens want and deserve. We will do this by working together with our community and intergovernmental partners and engaging the private sector in new ways. And we will do this by working respectfully with our incredibly dedicated and professional city staff, those who do the work on behalf of citizens each day and who provide us with an incredible depth of expertise in all the ways we're building a better city. I know that we won't always agree, and we shouldn't. I believe that healthy debate and different perspectives about the challenges and opportunities before us always contribute to the best decisions, the right decisions. My point is that one of the most important measures of our success, and how much of it we can achieve together, will be found in how we treat other, how we treat each other as people. My commitment to all of you, council, staff, citizens, and partners, is that we may not always agree, but I will always treat you with the fairness and respect that you deserve. I am determined to have a council that works together because after 20 years in office, I've seen many, many times the incredible impact an engaged and visionary council that is able to put aside its differences can have on this city. Over the years, we have done great things with great vision, and all by working together. The Expressway, our gas utility, the odd, community centers, a health sciences campus, a digital media hub, these are just a few examples, and there are many more to come. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get to work on building a better Kitchener together. I believe that Kitchener City Council is well-positioned to deliver on the mandate citizens have given us. We're very fortunate to have the powerful combination of the past municipal and leadership experience of our returning counselors and the talents, energy, and new perspectives of our two new counselors. I can already see some of the ways they will each contribute to building a better Kitchener over the next term of council. In Ward One, Scott Davy has a background and passion for the role that technology and innovation can play in creating efficiencies in how the city operates and how we can improve customer service for our citizens. Scott was instrumental in driving the city to develop and implement our e-services strategy earlier this year, which included the launch of Ping Street, Kitchener's first mobile app. I look forward to working with Scott as we look to find other ways to connect and engage with citizens over this term. Dave Schneider, our newly-elected Ward Two counselors, has some big shoes to fill. Well, I'm only kidding, Dave, as they pale in size to the ones left for me to fill. As he, I don't know about you, but as he was up here doing his oath, I had a hard time trying to not think that we're at a Rangers game as well. For the past six terms, I had the privilege of representing Ward Two, and let me just say that I couldn't be more pleased to see Dave in this seat. I think it goes without saying that he is Mr. Community. Dave understands the importance of neighborhoods and community. He is passionate about us being more connected and knowing our neighbors, and I look forward to working with him to create strong neighborhoods and Kitchener's first Neighborhood Day in the future. In Ward Three, returning Counselor John Gazola, who was acclaimed in the recent election, brings a critical depth of municipal and financial experience that he has gained through his 40-plus-year career as both Ward Counselor and former City of Kitchener Chief Administrative Officer. John also has a passion and pride for Kitchener's Hidden Valley area, and I look forward to working with him as we explore the future options of this natural gem. Yvonne Fernandez, our returning Ward Four Counselor, also cares deeply about the future of Hidden Valley. Yvonne is a dedicated and passionate advocate for the environment and community trails. She enjoys a love of cycling and would probably tell you that she's had some of her best conversations with residents while out-traveling the trails. I'm looking forward to working with Yvonne to see how we may be able to speed up the implementation of our Trails Master Plan. In Ward Five, Counselor Kelly Galloway-Seelock is beginning her third term. Kelly believes in complete neighborhood planning, which ensures that residents have easy access to all of the amenities they need within their own neighborhoods. She has long been an advocate for more parks, trails, and community centers, including moving ahead more quickly on the development of recreation facilities in the southwest end of our city. This is also something I'm determined to make a focal point for the 2015 budget process. Kelly has also been an advocate for more women seeking elected office at the municipal level, made history by celebrating the arrival of her firstborn during the last term, and tonight, please join me in congratulating her as she becomes the first counselor to ever be inaugurated awaiting the arrival of her second child. One of the things that is most important to Ward Six Counselor Paul Singh is ensuring that residents are informed and engaged about important decisions and projects. During his first term on council, Paul made impressive and substantial efforts to connect with his constituents. As an entrepreneur, Paul also understands the challenges that small and independent business owners face. I look forward to working with him as we focus on making the growth of the Waterloo Region Small Business Center an integral piece of Kitchener's economic development strategy. Returning Ward Seven Counselor Bill Ionitis not only believes in the importance of growing the economy, but he too is doing his part. Bill's efforts in his first term of council were successful in bringing Big Music Fest to Kitchener. In its first year, the festival drew 50,000 people from all over the world and created a $3.5 million boost to the local economy. Bill understands the potential impact of music and digital media on our economy, and I look forward to working with him on building our music work strategy and ramping up on the initial momentum of digital media in Kitchener. As a former City of Kitchener planner for more than 20 years, returning Ward Eight Counselor Zig Yonetski reminds us of our history as a city, where we've been, and how the city continues to evolve from a planning perspective. Zig understands what we need to do to manage growth in the future, and I look forward to working with him on providing guidance to something I believe, and many citizens in our community believe is a priority, the development of new residential infill guidelines. In Ward Nine, Counselor Frank Etherington recognizes that arts and culture is an important foundation of a growing economy, from our grassroots organizations like the Registry Theater and KW Little Theater, to our legacy organizations like the Center in the Square, the KW Art Gallery, and the KW Symphony. We know there are some challenges there, but I look forward to working with Frank and these important community organizations as we focus on finding solutions that support and sustain our arts community. While Sarah Marsh, our Ward Ten Counselor, is a new face on council, she's no stranger to the city of Kitchener. Sarah has devoted countless hours over the past number of years serving on Compass Kitchener, a citizens advisory committee which annually grades the city on its progress on our shared community priorities. Sarah has done great work to ensure residents have meaningful community engagement opportunities through the former Who Are You, Kitchener campaign, and on the recent Your Kitchener, Your City campaign. Her experience will be invaluable as we work together to explore how we will engage residents on key projects, including the LRT and parks. As I mentioned earlier, serving this community has been my life's work. My love for public service was first inspired as a boy of 14 when I worked on a campaign for the late John Sweeney. John was a role model, a mentor, and an incredible man of principled leadership. I'm pleased that his wife Kay is here this evening. My career in public service since then, as many of you know, hasn't just been in public office. Before being elected to council, I was an employee of the city of Kitchener for many years. I can tell you, the mayor's chair is sure a long way off from my first job selling tickets at Cameron Heights Pool, working as a page and custodian at the Kitchener Public Library, and as an intern in the clerk's and mayor's office over three summers during university. I certainly never dreamed I'd end up addressing you as mayor this evening when I was working in the planning department or when I later went on to work in information technology as a client services coordinator and technical support specialist. Having been a city employee for all those years, I can honestly say that I know what inspires our staff to be so proud and to go the extra mile on your behalf each and every day. It's the same thing that motivates me, an unwavering commitment to providing the best service possible to our citizens. service possible to our citizens, and I thank all of our staff for that. Before I conclude this evening, I would also like to thank a few other important people. First, thank you to the people of Kitchener who took time to go out to the polls. You brought me and these 10 councillors to this moment this evening. Thank you very much. I recognize that none of us were voted in by everyone, but my commitment as your mayor is to everyone. I will be everyone's mayor. Together, we will continue to build a better Kitchener. To my mom, who is in the audience tonight, along with my cousins' family and my godparents, thank you for being here this evening. Thank you for being there every step of the way, for all of your sacrifices, and for being here tonight as I realized this dream. My parents immigrated to Canada from Croatia in 1969. They taught me the value of hard work, commitment, and integrity, and to take my responsibilities seriously. I owe them a debt of gratitude for those important life lessons. And while my father isn't here this evening, he passed away shortly after I was first elected in 1994, I know he is here in spirit, and his values will be his continued legacy in guiding me in my work. A special thank you also to my godparents, Boris and Dragitsa Spisich, in a sense, my second set of parents, who are here this evening and have been neighbors for us since a year after we moved to Kitchener. As a councillor for the past 20 years, I've had the privilege of serving under three previous City of Kitchener mayors, well councillor and a staff person, rather, Dom Cordello, Richard Christie, who's here this evening, and Carl Zaire, each of whom mentored me, impacted my values, and strengthened my desire to serve Kitchener. Thank you to each of you, and especially to Mayor Zaire, for your guidance, your friendship, and your support over the last 17 years. I sincerely thank each of them, and all of the colleagues, and a number of you are in the room this evening, for the privilege of learning from you on Kitchener City Council over the years. It's kind of funny, because now I also have the privilege of serving on regional council and seeing some of the people I was first elected with back in 94 being on regional council, and I see Councillors Lorenz and Redman here in that regard. Thank you as well to my campaign team, many of whom are in the audience this evening. I will always be grateful for your tireless efforts, your patience and passion, and your above-and-beyond commitments to helping me get elected. To all of my family, friends, and colleagues here this evening, who are too numerous to mention, thank you for being here to share in this momentous and historic occasion with myself and the rest of council. You've been part of this journey with me for the past 20 years, and I'm honored that you can join me this evening. To our mayor's office staff, clerk staff, special events staff, security, and all City of Kitchener staff that helped make this evening a reality, thank you. A special thank you goes to Elizabeth Leacock, who took the lead on this event in our office. Thank you very much, Elizabeth. As I conclude, I will leave you with these final thoughts. Every day, I am inspired by the people of our city, my colleagues, staff, and community partners, by your hopes, by your dreams, by your determination, and by our shared desire to build the best Kitchener for all of us, for today and for generations to come. When I hold the mirror before all of you, I see active, engaged, adventurous, dynamic, and creative people. I see people who have adopted the pioneering spirit that is so much a part of Kitchener's fabric and channeled it into the arts, sciences, technology, business, medicine, and education taking place in our community. I see people who, like the city itself, are accessible, diverse, and welcoming. Together, we have done and will do so much. Some things will happen quickly; other things will take longer. In my office, I have a plaque, and it reads, "Successful is the person who has lived well, laughed often, and loved much, who has gained the respect of children, who leaves the world better than they found it, who has never lacked appreciation for the earth's beauty, who never fails to look for the best in others, or give the best of themselves." I am incredibly inspired by those words and the work before us. As we work together in the days and years ahead, I make these pledges to you: once again, that we may not always agree, but I will always treat you with the fairness and respect you deserve; that I will work together with all of you; that I am listening, and I will keep listening; and that every decision I make is what I believe in my heart is best for this city and for all of the people of Kitchener today and for generations to come. That is my standard. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to get to work on building a better Kitchener together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now I will ask Councillor Gazola to bring forward the bylaws. Councillor Gazola.
It has been moved by myself and seconded by Councillor Schneider that leave be given the mover and secander to introduce the following bylaws for three readings, and that the same be taken as read a first, second, and third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk, A being a bylaw to appoint an acting mayor, and B to confirm all actions and proceedings of the council.
Thank you very much, Councillor Gazola. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. It's my pleasure on behalf of council to announce that a reception will follow in the main floor rotunda. Music will be provided by jazz singer and pianist Tim Lewis, and we certainly hope that all of you will join us and invite all of you to attend. And now, Councillor Etherington, I believe you're bringing forward a motion.
The most important one of the evening, I think. It's been moved by myself, seconded by councillor Singh, that this inaugural meeting of City Council be adjourned.
I think this one might be a close vote. All those in favor? Opposed? That, too, is carried unanimously. The meeting has been adjourned. Thank you very much.